We need to order for November the 10th. First thing is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion by Grant, second by Campbell to approve the agenda. We'll do a roll call.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
For that, we'll move on to the minutes for October 27th, which I have in front of you. Need approval for them. Timing is good.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion by Grant to approve the October 27 meeting. And we've got a second by Campbell. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
And we'll move on to the bills, same thing. Need them approved.
Second.
Motion by Campbell, second by Grant to approve the bills of vouchers. Any discussion? Roll call.
Uh, Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
And with that, we'll move into our weekly update report from our Public Health Director, Kathy McKay, and Jamie's with her today.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Hopefully, um, the two Commissioners that are remote have received the scanned copies of our numbers.
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, you can see from the first page, you know, our positive cases continue to increase. We're at 3,233. Um, our 14-day case rate for 10,000 people, and you know, that's at 105.57, so that has increased as well. The number of positive cases in Minnesota continues to climb, almost 185,000, and the cumulative positive rate for Minnesota is 5.7. So you can see as we look at the grid where there's confirmed cases, um, no longer needing isolation, and active cases, we're at 655 active cases right now for, as of November 4th. Our age categories, uh, when you look at the ages in Clay County cases, the highest age ranges currently is that 18 to 22, and we're also seeing, um, pretty significant um, numbers in the ages 30 to 39. So those are our two high points for the age, ages for Clay County cases. And then on the back page of the stapled one, we're seeing the Cass County numbers that we've reported, uh, the last couple of weeks, so they're at, they're at almost 12,000 cases, um, 1,542 active cases. Their cumulative positivity rate is 16.99, so that's pretty significant. Their 14-day case rate per 10,000 is also quite high, at 123.9, um, from, uh, up through October 26th, and then the number through, um, 26th through the 8th of November is 165.88. So their positivity rate continues to climb, and they, um, are certainly one of the highest uh, states with those, um, rates and the positivity rate. Um, and you have all received the letter from Commissioner Malcolm, and they sent this out to about 42 counties that are over that 5%. We expected, um, our rates would increase. I've talked about it at numerous, numerous meetings, that we are going to see increases. You know, we have this, the saliva testing site, so we're doing a lot more testing, um, so that contributes to the increase in our positivity, uh, rates, of course, because we're seeing a percentage of, of increases in the, as, the more we test, the more we see. Um, the overall positivity rate for Minnesota is 5.7. Now, the Clay County number, as we don't often talk about, um, the latest number was, um, let's see, our latest number, 7.4, and I've described this before, where we do not receive all of the negative tests from the North Dakota Public Health Lab. So it isn't exactly accurate, it's, it's around that rate, but without those negative tests, we're not really seeing, uh, an accurate positivity rate. Um, that's just the reality of, of being on the border. Um, in Clay County, so what they capture, um, across the state is, is just the positivity rate based on the test, um, lab tests they have. So it's been, in Clay County, it's been in the sixes, like 6.2, 6.5 this last month, um, and now we've increased a little bit to that 7.4. So we're, again, in a group of many counties across the state of Minnesota, as well as the state overall, being, um, higher than 5%. Um, the state has been around in that 5, 5.3, 5.7% positivity rate.
Personally, I think we're probably even higher than that, I mean, all over the state, because.
Correct.
I'm just talking about my family situation right now, this past couple of weeks. I mean, if you don't know you have it, I mean, my son tested positive, but he had no symptoms at all, so there's all kinds of people out there, I think, that half this, if you don't get tested, you don't get counted.
Correct.
But because he tested, he gets counted, I mean, and I think there's a lot of people that they don't have no symptoms, but they are, they do test positive.
That's correct.
I think, so we're even higher than these figures. It's out there, and it's, I think it's, it's spreading. We gotta be careful, masks on.
You're, you're absolutely right on it. It's out there, it's spreading, it will continue to spread, and you're also right on about numbers of, you know, there's so many asymptomatic people, or very mild symptoms, that, um, it's just not even enough to go get tested sometimes, so, um, you know, some people have minimum symptoms, some people have a little bit more, it's such a variance. Um, the younger, um, group of, um, people have less symptoms, or less severe symptoms, so, um, you know, we worry about the, the ones with the, um, more chronic health conditions, those that are more predisposed to having adverse effects from this, as well as the elderly, um, so, you know, they're, they, they don't have quite the immune system to fight it off, so it's a concern. So I'll let Jamie talk a little bit about our, some of our testing and other things.
Okay, well, I'll start with the saliva testing. Um, this last week, the week of November 1st, there were 3,433 people that went through the saliva testing site, and, um, it's pretty much an even split between Minnesota and North Dakota, so we are continuing to serve North Dakota residents as well. Of those, 22.18% were positive, and so we're continuing to see an average of 20% of the people coming through that testing site are positive, which is high, you know, and so that means we are, we are catching the positives, so we're able to respond, um, and get them to isolate and contact their, their, um, reach out to their contacts for quarantine as well. Um, and so that was about 1,000 more than we tested the week before, so we're increasing the number of people testing by about 1,000. Initially, when they started, they told us that they had the capacity to, um, test 800 to 1,000 individuals a day, so that's, they've got plenty of opportunity for testing, and um, the comments that we're hearing about testing is that it's going really well, um, that people can register online, um, we've had people that, if they don't have a computer, then they can't do that, they can walk in, it sounds like they're doing a great job of serving walk-ins and appointments, um, fairly, so people aren't standing in that line waiting to, um, to get in if they've not already scheduled an appointment, so, um, it continues to go well, and we've heard a lot of positive feedback from the community in having that as a resource. Are you gonna say something?
No.
Okay. And then I'm just gonna hi- highlight a few things that were discussed yesterday. Um, the Commissioner of Health, Jan Malcolm, and the Governor, um, had a press conference, as they do, you know, every week, and a, a lot of comments came out of that, but basically, um, if you haven't heard, the Governor's talking about an announcement this afternoon, there's a lot of, um, discussion about what that will involve, but basically, the, the Governor was saying that we have, um, Minnesota Department of Health is seeing three infection sources, social events such as weddings, funerals, and large family gatherings, and bars and restaurants, and so, again, keeps stressing the fact that it's social gatherings, uh, where people feel safer, um, with their own family and friends, so they're not wearing masks, and those are the areas where we're seeing the spread, which is spilling over into our workplaces, and our schools, and our universities, and long-term care. So some of the Governor's comments were that, um, the top five states for spreading the infection included North Dakota, our neighbor, and Minnesota is estimated to move into the top 10 very soon, if we don't make some changes in Minnesota. Active cases in Minnesota have tripled over the last couple of weeks, and the average daily positivity rate is poised to hit an all-time high by the end of the week, averaging 15% daily positive rate for November 11th. Um, if we don't make some massive changes quickly, we will see, uh, higher cases and, and deaths. Um, Commissioner Malcolm talked a little bit about that silent asymptomatic spread, um, and it, it's unusual when it comes to viruses, usually we know when someone has a cold, and we can kind of keep our distance from them, um, but in this case, the asymptomatic spread is what's causing a lot of challenge for us with COVID. Um, they kind of talked about the silent spreaders being the 18 to 35-year-olds, um, and they really want to focus hard on getting those that are the silent spreaders, the asymptomatic positives, to be tested, so that we know they're positive, and we can respond to that quickly in order to isolate and quarantine to, to be able to control the spread. Um, you know, we've heard about super spreaders, and she said transmission is not just a cup, from a couple super spreaders, it's from thousands of mini events, again, really stressing the fact that it is those small gatherings of family and friends is where we're seeing that spread. Um, and then the Governor also talked about, um, vaccine distribution, and the plan coming for vaccine distribution as being a massive undertaking. Um, I've mentioned before, there's a lot of work from the federal, the state, and the local level, um, to prepare for vaccine administration, and, um, just, it's, it's coming soon, and we're hoping that we will start to vaccinate healthcare individuals and the most vulnerable populations in our communities, so. So those were the highlights from yesterday's press conference.
From what, just from a personal experience, what I went through with the testing, you know, I think I would have liked some sort of sheet or told me what to do, I mean, because when you get tested until you get your results, I mean, you really don't know what to do, you know, you, I mean, are you quarantined, aren't you? You don't know whether you have it or not, so there's some sort of precautions that we should be taking, I think, you know, if we're not quite sure or something, you know, because it took us almost a week to hear from our provider, you know, and stuff, before they finally, we said, okay, you tested positive, you contacted your provider, they returned your call, I mean, it was almost a week later, you know, so had we not taken precautions, we could have made a lot of contact, and I don't know whether we should be giving a sheet out saying, you know, do this until you hear from your results, do this, you know, uh, state warranty or something like that, I don't know, if they.
You know.
It just seemed like they were, we were just left out on limbo for, for a week.
Right. I know Vault, um, when they came and set up, they said they were very, um, they wanted to be paper-free, so that they would not have that, and I know I personally tested as well at that site, and I went through things kind of quickly because of what I know, um, so I'm not sure how much information was in there, in terms of the directions, if it told me what to do until I got my results, but I do want to tell you that, um, people call us all the time, all day long, and that's what we help them with.
Yeah.
Um, like, the DGF School District actually literally has our phone number and our names on their website, and the information that goes out, um, but also, our universities and our, our K-12 school systems are doing a lot of that themselves, and I can't stress that enough, um, they are, they are doing all of the case investigations in-house. We get phone calls from them regularly, what do you think about this, as well, but a lot of it is being done at the business level. I had a, a business owner who called to say, okay, this is what I'm doing, so they will often run by us, this is what I think I need to do, is this correct? Um, and so we just really want to encourage people, if you've been tested, stay home, if you're not sure exactly what it means beyond that, to call us, because we're happy to answer those questions.
Yeah, okay, good, I'm glad to hear that, because, I mean, it's, it's serious, and it's getting worse.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And it's just, go ahead.
Yeah, one of the, um, one of the catch-22s in this thing is that there's a lot of people who, um, you know, as you just mentioned, when you're, when you go to get tested, then you're, you're basically quarantining at the same time, so there's a lot of people who don't think they're, have COVID, and they don't want to go get tested.
Mm-hmm.
Because they'll be quarantined and not be able to work.
Right, yes.
And it's a real dilemma, and, uh, I don't know how we can figure that out, but, um, and it goes to what, what Frank said, you know, you don't, you might not know you have it, and you go and you find out what you do, but then, uh, as you also said, we had, I think, based on your number, we probably had 1,700 people tested last week.
Yeah.
In, in more, of, of Clay County residents, and of those 1,700, if the 20% were right, that'd be 350 people ended up being positive, um, but that also means that there was 1,300 and some that weren't.
Mm-hmm.
And those 1,300 and some still ended up being quarantined, and, so you can see the, the problem that creates from, from those who depend on paychecks from week to week, yeah, so I, I don't know how we fix this.
Right.
I just don't know how we fix it.
And, and you're right about that challenge, that's, that's hard, because people don't want to, and have a hardship if they have to quarantine, so we know that there's people out there that aren't going to get tested, or if they do, may not say anything and go to work or school, um, so that is.
So if those, so if I, so if those 1,300 that, that did not test positive, are they immediately released from quarantine then, or do they still have to stay on that 10-day quarantine?
The exception to that would be if they just decided they wanted to see if they were an asymptomatic spreader, so they had no known contact.
No.
And no symptoms.
Okay, then, then they would be released.
Yes.
Correct.
And they're told that then?
Um, well.
We, we tell them that, I'm not sure if the.
That's, that's where I thought what the problem was. You didn't get that information.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's, that's a gap, then.
I mean, we were just, we went through the tests, we left, goodbye, you know, and, I mean, I'm glad they're testing, that's good. It just felt like we were left in limbo, okay, now what do we do? We got tested, now we, we don't know our results, do we have it, do we don't have it, are we quarantined, uh, or are we, you know, it just, it just seemed like there was something missing there, you know, and it's just, uh, like I say, even after we heard we were positive, we still waited a couple more days to hear from our providers.
Oh, okay.
For them to return, I mean, that's got nothing to do with the testing, but, uh, and that's the providers, but, uh, it's, it's so easy to spread it, I mean, it's just, if you're not careful.
Right.
And that's why I'm just saying, you, we just got to all, we consider ourselves that we, we have it.
Mm-hmm.
Be careful.
We do have the information, um, you know, we put it out on, on Facebook, we also put it out on our website, so, you know, that some people are receiving it that way. I did want to say, we, Jamie mentioned, you know, K-12 and higher ed, and, and the great job they're doing, we are working with both of, all, all the superintendents in K-12, um, making some hard decisions about, you know, the school, um, and what they're going to be doing, um, as well as higher ed. Now, higher ed has made some decisions about when they're going to go remote, and, and the break that they're going to have, um, between the holidays, Thanksgiving, and Christmas, um, so they're making some really tough decisions now about, um, you know, having to have a, a longer time period where the students won't be in-house, um, and they'll be doing their classroom remote. As we see the numbers go up, they're just, it's, it's time to make some, some of those tougher decisions, so.
And personally, I think you people are putting a lot of stuff out there, and that's good. It's just that we're not reading it sometimes, you know, it's there, but we're not, they're not reading.
I agree, there's a lot of information, and that's, that's very true.
So I'm not trying to put the blame on anybody.
Nope, we totally understand.
My responsibility to find out about it too.
Mm-hmm.
So don't just sit back and say, well, no one told me about it, you know.
Yeah.
Boy, if you haven't heard about it by now, wake up, people.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for? Okay? Thank you very much for the update, and, uh, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go into our County Administrator Steve, and our Human Resource Director Darren for update on CARES.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, uh, we are, uh, continuing to wind down here towards, uh, towards December 1st, we're continuing to, uh, to meet as a CARES committee, uh, and, uh, we've, uh, had, have had some additional items on the, the agenda today, we will here as we, as we wrap up towards the end. Um, and we also provide you, this past week, uh, we made some adjustments to our chart, and, uh, I'll turn it over to Darren here to, to further discuss that.
Okay, thank you. For this week, I think last week we covered the, go into the seven categories, and so that's what this chart reflects in front of you. Um, the only two things that we were adding this week, and, and they'll both be on the agenda after this, and they are included in the chart, is the HR tech program and the DMV furniture request. The, the tech program is 4,900, and the, uh, DMV furniture request is, uh, 5,426, so that is, um, reflected in the chart that you have here. After what we have, after today, if it, if it is approved, we'll have about $75,000 left, but there are still a few things that we will need to purchase, um, prior to the deadline of getting all the funds spent, um, and those will be brought to you probably next week or the week after, um, so that, uh, you'll have a good, probably by the next two weeks, you'll have a very good idea of how much has been spent, uh, of the CARES funding, which totaled $7,843,443. Um, the Phase 1 and Phase 2 have all been done, checks, I believe, have been sent out for the small business loans, and, um, so that's pretty much what I have as far as the, the charts and the, and the CARES funding goes of what's been spent.
Thanks, Darren, just to kind of touch a little further on, on the business relief part, portion, between our two programs that dealt with the 1 to 50, uh, people employed, our 501(c)(3) s and 19s, and our long-term care in group homes, uh, through the CARES funding, we provided $1,586,000 in funding, uh, total, and so that's a, that's a very exciting, exciting piece, that, not that we have to do that, but that we're able to get that out and help, uh, help our local businesses. Uh, just wanted to provide a quick update, uh, our, there is a press lease, press release that's gone out about our DMV, uh, we will be closing, uh, today at 1:30, uh, to, uh, to begin the transition to the, to the Moritz Center Mall, uh, location. Uh, the state is also transitioning their Min-Lars to Min-Drive on Thursday and Friday, and so locations across the state are being shut down, and so we, our, our location will be shut today, uh, from 1:30, uh, and will be reopening at the Moritz Center Mall location at 8:00 AM on the 16th. Uh, so just so our citizens are aware, if you've made appointments, uh, for, for next week, we would want you to report to the Moritz Center Mall. Uh, and, and not necessarily, necessarily CARES-related, but I just wanted to provide a, a brief update from CARES from our perspective, is one of the things that our committee, uh, did in evaluating where our dollars would be best spent was looking, looking across in our communities of what funding was available, either through CARES programs and through, through the grants, and, uh, a number of weeks ago, Lori Schwartz, Executive Director of Lakes and Prairies Community Action Partnership, along with Emma Schmidt, came before this board, uh, to talk about a grant, uh, that they were applying for, uh, Housing Assistance Program, uh, through the state of Minnesota, and looked for our support, and they had received that, that, uh, funding of over $800,000, and just wanted to provide just a brief update, uh, to this point, uh, in September, they served 870, or excuse me, 700, 8, cheaper, 87 households, uh, in October, they served 133 households, and through this past Friday, they served a total of 233 households in Clay County, totaling $306,000. Uh, and so they're continuing to, to work to meet the, the deadline is, is also December for them. Now, they've hired, uh, some additional staff, uh, and are partnering with presentation partners, uh, to make sure that they're able to meet the, the requests that, that are before them by that deadline, but I think it's extremely important as, uh, it's not just a, it's a community involvement of making sure from the county's perspective, uh, in this case, in our local cities, uh, and, and our different community partners who are working to, uh, to meet the needs of, of our citizens during this time, so I just wanted to make the board aware of that. Uh, that concludes my report.
Mr. Chair, can I, Steve, the, uh, that grant, wasn't that also to help those who might need rental assistance?
That is, that's correct, yes. So rental assistance, uh, direct payments, uh, some, uh, heating, cooling, that type of thing.
So, um, I'm a little surprised at the number you said of 300 and some thousand, I,
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, it's not a matter of, it's not a matter of the need, it's a matter of, of the, being able to have these, the staff to work.
Process.
The application process, so they, they feel very comfortable and confident based on, based on the, the setup that they have, of where they are in, in distributing the funds, and feel, uh, feel very comfortable that they'll be able to, to, um, give out all the funds by, by the due date. Thank you.
Just that one question on that, um, DMV at the Moritz Center Mall, I realize the parking lot goes all the way around, I mean, we weren't specified to say, "DMV parking is over here," or anything, you can pretty much park where you want, I mean, there is really no, it's sort of centrally located, so no matter which door you go into, you almost have to walk the same distance, you know, wherever you park at, I was just wanting, we weren't assigned parking in a certain area, I, I don't know how they work with the parking.
Good question, Mr. Chair, no, there, there are no restrictions on, on where, where citizens, uh, park, and so they can park wherever, whatever best suits them.
No? Okay, any further questions for Steve, or?
Um, Commissioner Gross, I just wanted to, uh, on the, on the last, uh, segment there with Kathy, I just wanted to kind of give you an update of what the, the employees and how we handle those, people that are COVID-positive and/or being isolated and quarantined. We, HR does track that stuff, and we do send out an email stating, you know, what they should be doing, or how to fill out the time card correctly, and then I go through the time cards every, every pay period and sign off on those, and so some of that information is getting out to our employees, so I know a lot of times Kathy and, um, and Jamie talk about the citizens and, and everything, but I think as far as the employees go, we're tracking it pretty darn good, once they let us know that somebody has been either quarantined or, um, isolated due to the COVID, and then they do get the emergency paid sick leave from the time they get tested to the time those test results come back, and if they do come back negative, they are told to contact, I'm sorry, if they do come back positive, and they are out for a certain amount of time, they are told to contact Public Health before they come back to work, so there is, there is, I don't want you to think that there's no information out there, especially for our employees, because we are providing that, uh, as part of, when I receive that form from them, that starts a whole litany of tracking process that we do for our employees.
I'm glad to hear that, and I guess I didn't mean to infer that we're not doing enough, what I'm trying to infer is, we as citizens of Clay County have a responsibility.
Yep.
We can't wait for you to say, hey, now do this, do this, we can't wait for the Health Department to say, do this, do this, we as citizens have a responsibility.
Yep.
And we have to take up that responsibility, to get tested, and do our, you know, watch how we do our contact with the community, you know, that, that's our responsibility, we can't, we can't mandate that, I mean, you just gotta, as a citizen, do that.
Yep.
And, uh, no, I appreciate what you're doing, and, uh, I know the Health Department's doing all that too, but, excuse me, but, um, I, I'm putting my, I'm putting the responsibility on the citizens of Clay County. We need to take up that, do our part. Okay, we're done with that part? Then we're gonna go on to, Darren, you're gonna talk to us about the Human Technical Assistance Program?
Sure. Um, as you probably remember, probably back in the March time. Sure. As you probably remember, probably back in the March timeframe, AMC had a program which was called the Human Resources Technical Assistance Program, and they have received, they received a grant for this program to go on for three years at no cost to the counties. That grant is up this year, and so, the AMC has put out to all the counties if they wanted to participate in this program. When I brought this to the board the first time, this would have been money that comes out of the county budget. Since that time, I have contacted AMC and also looked at some of the stuff that is coming out in this AMC Human Resources Technical Assistance Program, and a lot of it is CARES and COVID-related. And so, what I'd like to do is suggest and ask for the money, the $4,900 per year, to come out of the CARES funding, because it does deal a lot with the CARES and COVID. And what it is, is it's kind of a subscription for the year, and anytime we have a question about something, we can put our question into this, David Drown Associates, if you remember, they're the ones that did our wage study as well. And within 24 hours, I normally have a very good answer back. So, the $4,900, AMC believes that that could be CARES-related. I did take this to the CARES committee, and it was voted on to, to pay for this through the CARES Act funds. As you see from the chart, we do have some CARES funding available. And just, just as an example, not only do they, if we suggest, you're putting questions, and they respond, but they also put out information on a weekly basis, usually weekly, maybe every week and a half, something will come out related to HR changes that are going on. And the one that just came out on Friday has to do with the CDC and pregnancies and increased risks and how they're looked at, whether they're, they're increased risk or might be at risk. And so, those are the type of things that I would have never known had these, you know, things come out and changed. It's not something I track every day. I have enough to do, just keeping my head above water right now. So, that does provide a service to this. It's almost kind of like having a HR specialist on call. We don't have, I don't have to call the labor attorney to get answers to some of this stuff. I get a very quick turnaround. Another example of this was, we recently had an employee that passed away, and so I wrote in a thing on, you know, how do we handle taxes and final paychecks and all of that other stuff, stuff that doesn't really happen too often and would have probably taken me a half a day to research. And I sent that in on Friday afternoon, and Monday morning, I had a very detailed response on what we do if we have the death of an employee, and what do we do with the taxes? Do we take taxes out, PARA? They were able to call the IRS, they were able to call PARA and all of this. And so, it's something that I could have done, but with all the other things that are going on right now, it's very difficult for me to take a half a day and research these types of questions. So, I wanted to bring this back to the board to see if that would be acceptable to use CARES money to pay for the 2021 subscription fee to the HR Technical Assistance Program.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
We did discuss this yesterday at our CARES meeting, and everybody in the committee agreed that it would be an appropriate expense to fall under the category, and I would move that we authorize that.
Second.
They were going to motion a second to authorize the $4,900. Any discussion of this? And my discussion would be, okay, so this is just a one-year thing then, or, I mean, this continues, and I think it's a good thing that we have this contact with these people, because that's like hiring an extra employee. I mean, having all that information available to you, just with a phone call or something like that, so. But this is just a one-year thing, or?
Correct. It's for 2021. I don't foresee COVID going away at the end of the year. So, this would be 2021, and then any following year.
But do we have funds for 2021, or are we using this year's funds?
We would use CARES Act dollars for, to pay the.
Because we have, no.
Yes.
So, the $4,900 would come out of the CARES money for this year, for this, for this coming year, for 12-month period of time. At that point in time, we could reevaluate the necessity.
So, we're paying a year ahead, a year ahead.
Yeah.
Correct.
And we, we could reevaluate in a year to see if, if it's still necessary to move forward.
Well, if the CARES committee get, is all for this, I'm definitely for it, too. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next thing, we're going to do additional furniture purchase for the motor vehicle department. Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I mentioned, this week, the DMV is transitioning over to the Moritz Center Mall location. There's just some additional furniture that, that they will need in that location to make sure that they have adequate spacing and, I guess, coverage between, between the two staffing stations. And so, the request before the board this morning is to spend an additional $5,426.08 on the parts to make sure that they're ready to, ready to go here next week. And this, this would be taken out of the COVID infrastructure mitigation category.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin, to approve the $5,426.08 purchase of furniture. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Okay. Looks like we got everything covered for today. We're going to committee reports now. Kevin, you want to start it out today?
Sure. Yesterday morning, we had our CARES committee meeting. We've, we've acted on those items that were, that we spent most of the time talking about. As Darren mentioned, there will be a few more things that'll be coming forward, smaller items next week or the week after that. Yesterday afternoon, we had a landfill construction meeting out at the landfill. That is, the cell expansion went really well. The closure on the one part is now in process and looking really good. The, the gas line, the loop on the gas line for the current incinerator and the new incinerator is about complete and ready to go. They were pouring the concrete pad yesterday for the new road that'll go up to the existing landfill, where they had to move the road and recreate it. And they are working on the new area where the public will be able to go in, and there'll be four bays that citizens can use to dispose of materials, including the ability to use the dump trailers. So, it's, I think it's going to be a long overdue, but really good improvement to that landfill, and it's their, the contractor's really, really done a good job in keeping it up to date now. I don't know, Mr. Whalen might have more to add to that, but that concludes my report.
Okay. Jim, did you have something?
Yes. On Thursday last week, we had the 820 power meeting, and we discussed the main topic is whether to hold the government retreat this year or not. And if to hold it, then what kind of topics would you be looking at? And I would think that in light of the new numbers we were getting from the COVID-19, we should rethink about holding any kind of a public meeting like that at this point in time. That's just my opinion. And then later on, that same day, we had the building committee, Bishop Rose and I, and the department heads and Steve were there for that. We discussed the presentation from Clyde McCarthy Architect Scott Eddick about the building over on 12th Avenue, 934th Street, and various details having to do with that. That's my report.
Okay. Grant, do you have them?
I just had solid waste yesterday, and Kevin already reported on that. It is nice to see the work that's been done out there. I think the weather is pretty much cooperated, and, yeah, it's, considering where we were a couple months ago and where they're at now, it's pretty amazing, so, but it's, it's all good. That's it for me.
Okay. Jenny, you got something?
Thank you. We attended the CARES Act meeting, and that's what covered all the issues with the trust. I attended the Gasway, the Food Company, and the State Department meeting again, Harley and Market, and the State Department of Public Health. Relative issues come down there, and then we also discussed pesticide use of public property use, who referred to the snapshot on that one. And then, we, I attended the first Friday's meeting on Friday, where the Department of Food Systems needed to give an update on what we're doing. They also had an update on the American food culture we practice. And then yesterday, I attended the CARES Act meeting as well, that I think we're starting with.
Okay. My meetings last Wednesday, I had two meetings with the Wild Rice Watershed Board. One was their regular meeting, monthly meeting, just routine stuff there. And then in the afternoon, we approved the one watershed, the one plan, and that's been moved on to Bowser for implementation, and we'll be waiting to hear on them, and should be another meeting coming up probably in January sometime to make final approval of that. And as Jim had said, that we did meet on the building committee on Thursday afternoon. And I guess, of all the people that were there that are going to be involved in this move, in this move, I really was impressed in everybody's, what they involve, or what they brought into, what they need, you know, how many spaces they're going to need, what they need for, for storage and all that stuff, you know? And I was glad to see Scott from Clyde McCarthy there. He seems very acquainted with what the needs of the county are, you know? At first, you know, I thought, well, can we figure this out ourselves, how to move into this building? It's one open space, but, boy, the more you got involved in this, you found out that we really do need someone to tell us, okay, here's, do this, do this, and do that, you know? And I'm glad we went forward with that contract with Clyde McCarthy to help us out with that project, because that's going to be one big undertaking. Hopefully, that works out good, you know? But to get everybody situated in there is going to be quite an effort. So, I mean, there's just a lot, everybody that was going to be moving over there was involved in the meeting. I'm glad to see the people there and further in. Those are my three meetings. Steve, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Wednesday, I participated in the Corona CARES Fund meeting, and that's been addressed. That morning, we also had Department Head Management. We talked about our, our new commissioners that will be coming forward in January. We had a public health update. We talked open enrollment and MCIT schedule reviews. If I could just give some credit to the HR department, again, that Darren and Anna just did a tremendous job for Anna, this being her first time. I think we, she had to process of our 600 or 400-plus benefited employees. I think that she had about 170 of them to do in the last three days, and so, she did just a tremendous job working through that. On the 5th, we did have the Joint Powers Committee, CARE, that Commissioner Haney's discussed. I think we are, we are looking to make that move, to make that a virtual meeting. We will not be meeting in person for, for that January 29th meeting. We had some good discussions about bonding. The city of Morehead talked about our transfer station, also the underpass, the flood dollars, and they reported that, you know, Clay County from a, from a funding standpoint, received roughly 5% of the total bonding dollars a lot of this year. So, quite a, quite a heavy lift from, from our representatives here and legislators. So, that was great news. And also, just wanted to point out, Mayor Olson wanted to extend his appreciation to this board for extending the business relief grants. He said that was a great benefit to his communities. And also Superintendent Brandon Lunick also wanted to, to point out the great work that Kathy and her staff have been. Kathy mentioned earlier, their weekly superintendent updates, and Brandon just wanted to recognize the good work that they do. On the 5th, I met with Kathy on a series of issues with public health. That afternoon, again, we met with, we met with Clyde McCarthy. It's been covered by Commissioner, Commissioner Gross. We're hoping to get a potential layout of that building by tomorrow, and then our building committee will meet again on Friday. Friday, worked on some organization for the intergovernmental retreat, speakers, teams, platform, things like that. On the Monday, we had a CARES committee that's been addressed, and also met, participated in the meeting that Commissioner Campbell and Whalen out at the landfill. And just the last thing, the two-year tax abatement, just wanted to put this out there, that while we just generally send letters historically to, to our cities and our school districts, that townships are, are certainly able to participate in the two-year tax abatement. We've had some interest from a number of our counties, a number of our townships, and so we may see that in our, in our January, in January, when we go through that, that process, finalize that process. And then, again, just a reminder, our DMV is closing today at 1:30, and we'll be reopening, reopening on Monday in the Moritz Center Mall location. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Anything from anybody else? Brian, you got something to let us know?
I'm leaving, sir, nothing else.
Okay. Darren, you're okay? One other thing, I'd like to welcome David Evans, who's going to take over District 1 for Grant.
District 5.
Or 5, excuse me. Okay, wel, welcome to the group here.
Thank you.
Thank you for showing up here. Okay, with that, we're adjourned.